Welcome to the April 3 meeting of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission meeting is now in session. Welcome back Patty.
Thank you.
Good to have you back with us. If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Spin. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Thank you. Kate, could you call the role please?
Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Patty Crowen.
Here.
Sean Keir.
Here.
Miles Lessinger.
Here.
Doug Bryson is absent and Steve Griffiths.
Here. Are there any agenda changes or revisions?
Actually, just one thing I would like to do quickly and that is to introduce you to Weston Fritz, who's our new planning assistant planner primarily responsible for vacation rentals.
Welcome.
Yeah. It's nice to meet everybody.
Oh, an acceptance speech.
Well, I just thought I'd take this opportunity to update you on a couple of things going on in the department. And tell you a little bit about myself. So we did switch to quarterly renewals for the VRD licenses. So instead of renewing on an annual basis, we switched to a quarterly basis, which seems to help us manage the workflow of renewing the many licenses that there are. In terms of the cap for the R15 residential zone, we're at about 183 out of the 194. So we're getting pretty close to filling up. The applications aren't coming in too fast, but I'm sure it'll fill up at some point here. Let's see. That and we're just kind of gearing up for the summer and kind of listening to people and dealing with a couple of complaints here and there. But as you know, my name's Weston Fritz. I grew up in California, moved here about seven, eight months ago. I went to UBC, a degree in geography and environment sustainability.
And why did you go to that school?
I went to University of British Columbia in Vancouver, BC. And I studied geography as a bachelor's in environment sustainability through their geography department. It was kind of a mix between human geography and physical geography. A large focus on urban studies and sustainability.
How was spring break? Was that a good precursor of what summer may be like?
Yeah, you know, I took a drive just to kind of see what all the action was going on. And you could definitely tell there are a lot more people here. And some of those areas that you see all the rentals are in, you can really tell that, you know, they fill in quite a lot when vacation time comes around. So it's good, you know, I don't think, like, I mean, I'm excited just for the summer in general.
It'll be busy.
Yeah, yeah, which is not a bad thing either. So we'll see how it goes, but you can definitely tell the difference. But yeah, anything else? Any questions?
Where in California?
I grew up in Hapun Bay, which is south of San Francisco, about 40 miles. And yeah, I went to high school in San Francisco. I lived there for about four years in the city. Lived in Canada while I was getting my degree. And other than that, I lived in Bend for a couple of years and now in Lincoln City.
Well, you ended up in the right spot, so welcome to Lincoln City.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I like it so far. It's really nice.
Good, good.
Especially when the sun's out, you can't beat that. The rain's not too bad.
One of the things that impressed us about Weston is that during college, he started a company doing landscaping, a landscaping business, and had 200 clients by the time he graduated.
Yeah, it was, it was an interesting experience. And I also had a junk removal business as well that was kind of combined with the landscaping. But I kind of realized at some point, you know, it's not necessarily what I wanted to do for my entire life. But it was a great experience nonetheless. Learned a lot of great skills and...
Well, I think this job is going to give you a lot of really good experience in terms of working with the public on tourism issues and urban issues.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree.
It's been a very contentious issue. This has been a very contentious issue for at least five years with the city council and the planning department. And I can see both sides of the issue. As a residential property owner, I did use my house for a couple of years as a vacation rental. And it was a horrible experience for me, not because of the tenants that, and the partiers that we got in Devil's Lake. But I sold the house and now I'm in that condominium myself only. You're going to hear a lot of stories. And thank you for coming tonight to introduce yourself.
Yeah, not a problem. Thank you very much. Yeah, I've tried to bring myself up to speed on all the issues. It does seem like it's been definitely a contentious battle. But, you know, I think it's, looking at some of the other cities and what they've done, it seems...
I just returned from Palm Springs and they're having the same issue there with vacation renters.
Yeah.
People want their homes back if they're living there full-time or mostly full-time. And the vacation renters are partiers from Los Angeles, basically.
Yeah. Well, it's funny, my parents had a vacation rental that, when I was growing up. And there's a couple of times we came up to our, you know, they had a place in Lake Tahoe that they rented out from when I was pretty young. And we'd come up, sometimes the TV's gone, you know, you come up sometimes and your couches collapsed into pieces. And, you know, you find out that there was four families in your small place or... So there's definitely some downsides, I think, to, you know...
There are a lot of stories more than that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure, you know, I'm sure it gets worse. But I wouldn't want, you know, too many people in my house, really.
Well, Weston's been here now, this is his fourth week. Is that right? Fourth?
Yeah.
So he's really hit the ground running and he seems to be catching on very quickly.
It's good to have you on board. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Just one minute, excuse me. Also mentioned that in hiring Weston, we went through a pretty exhaustive process and had a lot of good applicants. And actually, our two top applicants were both already local residents, which was very pleasing to see. We've got a good pool of people here.
Well, yeah, I look forward to working with everybody and excited for the future.
Great.
I might stay and watch his video too, if that's okay.
Oh, of course. Yeah. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Any other changes to the agenda?
No, no. Thank you, Weston.
Thank you. Any, is there a motion to approve the minutes of our meeting on February 6?
I move that we approve the minutes from that February 6 meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. No public comments on non-agenda items, I see. No final orders or resolutions, no public hearings or deliberations, no old business, no new business. But we do have some planning commission training, correct?
Right.
Great.
You do?
Deborah, welcome.
When is the tsunami presentation? Has that been rescheduled?
It hasn't been rescheduled yet. Actually, it will probably be at a city council meeting. But we haven't, we haven't scheduled it yet. But you all obviously are welcome to attend and invited to attend.
Thank you.
Okay, I picked out a couple of videos, short videos, three. One is about, well, two of them are about very small apartments. And one of them is about cohousing. So it's interesting that, I know that affordable housing has been a priority for the commission. And it's interesting, we've had both of these topics come up with some of our local developers. So it's, they do raise some questions. And I'll let you start out with tight quarters. This is about a micro apartment.
Next, an increasingly popular solution for the many people in big cities who want to live alone. Correspondent Mona Iskander has our story. It first appeared on the weekend edition of the NewsHour.
This is a micro loft here in Vancouver. It's about 260 square feet. And everything is really compact. It's got to be multifunctional.
Sean Groff is a 26-year-old employee at Whole Foods who lives in a building that consists solely of what are known as micro apartments.
We're standing in every room. We're standing in my kitchen and my dining room and my living room and my bedroom. My bathroom's just around the corner. The table comes up.
His dining room table is also his bed.
The whole thing folds down. It's classic Murphy Ben's style.
For about $950 a month, he learns to make do with his 260-square-foot space.
Voila. If I have company and I need another chair, I can use my coffee table again. And I can enjoy as well. This is a solution for people like myself in this stage of my life. I don't have that many things and I don't feel like I need that much space. I'm not really home that often. You ask yourself what you really need. And if you're honest about that, a lot of things become unnecessary.
He happens to live in Vancouver, Canada, one of the first North American cities to embrace the tiny living concept. But the idea is catching on in a number of cities in the United States as well, like Seattle, San Francisco, New York, Boston, Washington DC, Providence, and Cleveland. They've all been pursuing projects to develop this new model. It's an idea that may be new to North America, but countries like Japan have for years looked to micro apartments as a solution to high urban density.
There's very little housing restrictions in Tokyo, so the housing really does correspond with the population need.
Sarah Watson is the deputy director of a nonprofit research group in New York, the Citizens Housing and Planning Council. For the last five years, the organization has been studying new concepts in housing. Watson says the number of people living by themselves in the United States has increased dramatically. In the 40s and 50s, it was less than 10%. Today, that population is closer to 30%. People are getting married later, getting divorced at higher rates than they once did, and are living longer. And Watson says the supply of housing for single people hasn't kept up with this changing demographic.
If the population changes, but there's not housing supply to follow, what happens is people start going underground and living informally. And that's why you see this huge growth in this Craigslist market, people trying to make room in housing stock that's not designed for it.
And the problem is only going to get worse. For instance, New York's population is expected to rise by approximately 600,000 people by the year 2030. That's about an 8% increase.
We can't just keep building taller buildings. So there has to be some new ways to accommodate these people within it. So this whole space is 325 square foot.
So her organization lobbied to convince Mayor Michael Bloomberg's administration to consider new types of housing in New York, including micro apartments, like this one on display at a recent exhibit at the Museum of the City of New York.
The shelf stays horizontal. You don't even have to clear your books.
This is for big cities, particularly cities that attract young people, going to be a very big problem coming down the road. And this is the first step that we're taking to try to find a solution.
In a city where space is at a premium, Mayor Bloomberg launched a pilot project to be developed on city-owned land on Manhattan's east side. Each of the 55 prefab units will be housed in a single building, and each will be less than 400 square feet. In order to do that, Mayor Bloomberg said he would waive zoning regulations put in place in the 1980s to protect against overcrowding. Construction is set to begin this December or January.
So it's basically an experiment. Right. It's an experiment and the city's using it to properly test what happens if you just relieve a few elements, a few controls, really to see what the options could be.
New York's micro-unit building will require that 40% of the units are rented at an affordable rate. This being New York, the word affordable is relative. The rent for those tiny subsidized apartments will be between $940 and $1,800 a month. That's actually quite low for the neighborhood.
This, for many cities, is a selling point.
John and Franca is a law professor at Suffolk University in Boston who studies affordable housing and land use policy.
I think it's good for cities in terms of being able to retain young professionals, recent college graduates who might otherwise be priced out of the city and that that'll add a certain, you know, dynamism to the city. And Boston, for instance, is really pushing that front that they want to retain their recent graduates who otherwise can't afford to live there. And those graduates are going to be important for the city's broader economy to grow.
But there has been backlash. In Seattle, community groups have voiced concerns that these units crowd too many people together and that they make neighborhoods less stable as young people come and go. In Vancouver, critics worry that micro apartments will replace housing for the poor. For example, the apartment building where Sean Groff lives used to be a single-room occupancy building. Locals complained its residents were being forced onto the street.
I mean, critics say that these are really geared towards young, high-income people who are moving to the city for the first time. It's not really addressing the needs of lower-middle-income workers who also need the housing.
A lot of these pilots that are happening in cities are definitely on the higher end because they're happening in high-value areas. But we believe if you could really think through the design concepts of these small spaces and situate them in other locations, you know, you're really changing the price point for that. And you can target different populations.
We have a small, one-drawer dishwasher.
And Watson believes micro-units make sense for the way many people live today.
There's a reason why this is catching on in the country because, you know, you can live quite comfortably now with your music collection and your, you know, your books all on a very tiny laptop. I mean, it's actually transformed our need for space in the last five years technology. So you couple that with new transformable furniture and you can really maximize a small space in a positive way.
You can find that story in all of the PBS NewsHour weekend's signature segments on our website. Next, an increasingly popular solu-
Okay, stop. Okay, now, you know, one of the things that we use to define, actually, the key thing that we use to define an apartment is a kitchen. And it's interesting with instant pots, with microwaves, hot plates, that kind of thing. That is kind of blurring the distinction between what is an apartment and what is not. So that's just something to keep in mind. Does anybody have any comments about that particular little video? Nope. Okay, let's go on to the next one. Here is an even smaller place, I think. And this is in Tokyo. We might...
I'm about to meet a fellow YouTuber. Today, I'm in Tokyo where I'm about to meet a fellow YouTuber, Emma, who lives in a crazy cool but crazy small apartment. This one, I can't wait to check out. Hey, Emma.
Hi.
Hey, I'm Bryce.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, come on in.
Thank you. I'm so excited to be here.
Yeah, I'm excited to show you my tiny little, little home. Welcome.
It's very small, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's a bit tight. You can touch both the walls.
How big is this place, actually?
Uh, it says eight square meters, so...
Eight square meters?
Eight square meters, yeah.
Wow.
It's pretty, pretty, pretty tight.
So as a city apartment, this is actually a lot smaller than a lot of the tiny houses I've visited.
Yeah.
How did you actually come to be here in this place?
Well, I spent ages like looking for apartments and everything, but this place just caught my eye because it's got two separate levels. A lot of places are just like, the bed is right next to the bathroom and the kitchen and you like eat next to your bed and it just felt a bit wrong. So I finally found somewhere that has two levels, which kind of separates my, my living and my sleeping area. But yeah, I just, I always wanted to be in Japan and I found a way to get here.
Being an apartment in downtown Tokyo, this is really small. But is it actually kind of typical of the apartments in this area?
I mean, Japanese apartments are typically really small, but this, it's at least more narrow than anything else I've ever seen before. Like, you can touch both the walls.
Yeah.
But yeah, this is definitely a bit smaller.
It's strange the way, because even though it is so narrow, and as you say, I mean, I don't, I don't even have to stretch out my arms to touch both walls. But even though it's so narrow, it doesn't feel super confined. And I think that's because you've got all the height there as well, don't you?
Yeah, I actually think this, this height is super useful because I can actually finally stretch at least in one direction. I think without this extra space, it would feel a bit, maybe a bit too cramped, but it feels good.
Can you show me around?
Yeah, so when you enter a Japanese home, you've got to take your shoes off in the genkhan because even when they gave me this place, they're like, you must take your shoes off. Like, even if it's part of your culture to wear shoes inside, you have to respect Japanese standards and take your shoes off inside.
Fair enough.
So there's like a little shoe cupboard here, which I keep all my shoes in. And then this is my closet, which has coats and stuff.
Ah, right.
I don't know if I should show you because it's really full.
It may be a full cupboard.
Yeah.
There is no shame in the number of clothes that you have in that closet. I think girls back home in Australia and New Zealand would, would struggle to be that Spartan.
I'm doing really selective with like my fashion choices here because I don't have, I don't have room to be luxurious. It just keeps life simple.
And the entrance way microwave with toaster oven?
Yeah, so, yeah, you have your toaster oven, your microwave. This stuff actually moved it. It used to be over there, which made the space feel really, really like claustrophobic.
Right.
Because there was nowhere, like nowhere to move around. But I moved all the stuff over here. And yeah, this toaster oven is kind of, I had to get these sticky pads because when there's an earthquake, it moves.
Right.
And so I usually like sit right there. And if these sticky pads weren't there, it would like just keep moving towards my head. One day, this is going to suck. So yeah, now it doesn't move in an earthquake, which is cool.
And then more storage in here for cutlery and pots and pans?
Anything, cupboard thing just has bits and bobs of everything, really. There's like a general theme, but if I just have something, I'm like, I need to put this somewhere. And I just like check it in. It's not the best method, but whatever gets stuff out of, out of the open space.
You've even got a yoga mat here.
Yeah, so, ah. Sometimes I like to like work out or do yoga and try, okay, it doesn't fit. Like, it just, like at the corner. It's like in that size, do you want me to show you?
Yeah, go on.
Yeah, all right. So I try to like, here. So this is like the biggest space in my house. So I'll just like try to lay it out like this. But like the table's just in the way, so I can usually get it to about there. And like doing exercises is really frustrating because sometimes it'll be like, okay, now stretch your arms to the side. And I'm like, and I'll like be lying on the ground and it just, it never quite works out. But it's enough, like I can do stuff this way. But yeah, that's where I do my exercises. A for effort, right?
Absolutely.
You're just going to try everything and if it doesn't work, you try something else. I think that's good about small spaces, like it makes you think a bit more, keeps you creative.
And then you have your office area here?
Yeah, this is like pretty much where I spend most of my time. I just get like a chair, my computer. And yeah, it's, it's just where I edit. Like that's where I edit all my videos, where I answer all my mail, where I do pretty much all of my work. But it's nice because I can at least like look out the window at the back. Yeah, I know that my, my neighbor, he's got his desk facing the wall and I couldn't deal with that.
No.
If I like am working and I look up and all I see is a wall, I get so like, like, let me out. So yeah, I can always see outside. Yeah, I always need something living or it's like something happening in the space. Like, that's why I have so many pot plants everywhere.
Yeah.
And I want even more. But yeah, if there's no living things, if I can't see the outside world, things just feel really stale and that's when this space can feel a bit small. I did find that a bit of a challenge when I got here because this is, like all the furniture isn't mine. Like this is a fully furnished, come-as-it-is apartment. And trying to find different ways to make this space my own was like challenging, but it feels really like rewarding.
Yeah.
Because it is a challenge, especially when you can't pick your own furniture. And I can't drill into the walls or anything, so I just have to let it be, but influence it
Yeah.
with all my stuff. And because you have to be so selective with your possessions, it's like I choose only things that mean a lot to me.
Yeah.
And really help the space.
And then there's the kitchen space down over here.
Yeah, yeah. So pretty much, this is actually kind of typical of Japan. So you get no bench space when you get an apartment in Japan, really. Even if you get like a big apartment, for some reason, they, they value sink space more than cutting space.
Right.
I have no idea why, but it's just really typical of Japan. So what I did was I managed to find a chopping board that manages to fit just over the space, so I can cut on the chopping board and actually have somewhere to do things.
Your seat down here, your little chair down here is so cute.
Well, I'm quite lucky to be in Japan because like no one sits at a table here. Like everyone sits on the floor usually.
Yeah.
Like all like dining tables and everything are usually like on the floor. So you sit either on floor chairs or just on your knees or sit cross-legged. Like, no one has space for dining tables here. So it's actually quite easy to find a little, a little chair. Just give you a demonstration. So the funny thing is like my feet don't... Yeah, there's just not enough space to like put my feet down fully. But I mean, it's enough space. And sometimes I'll edit here, like I have, I'll just reach over here. I have this little table I found. Oh, sorry, snake mat. So I can pull that out and sometimes I'll like edit here. If it's raining, I'll just like have my computer here, do my thing and just be able to look out the window and have a good time.
Yeah.
It's great, I love it. It's like a little paradise. Yeah.
And so you've even actually got a little balcony here as well.
Yeah, yeah, I do. It's a little, yeah, it's not the smallest one I've ever seen in Japan. Like sometimes they'll have balconies, which are just like, you can kind of open the door a little bit.
Yeah.
But yeah, whatever space you get in Japan, you make the most of it, so. And out here, I'll just show you. This is my clothesline.
Oh, right.
So whenever I do my washing, it just folds out like that.
Brilliant.
Yeah.
Oh, that's excellent.
Makes me so happy, yeah. Going to the shops here, there's so many things, I'm like, I would have never thought of that.
Yeah.
There's no way, yeah. I mean, some things are kind of unnecessary, but a lot of things, like when I first came here, some things I'm like, I'd never used it, but now I'm like, I need that. Because the way of life here is just so different.
And your bathroom here?
Yeah, it's super interesting. This is my little, my little bathroom. So a lot of Japanese bathrooms, it's kind of hard to explain, but it, this is the shower room.
Right.
So everything gets really wet super easily every time. So then you have these little bathroom slippers. So when it is wet, you can just put them on and you don't get your feet wet, which is super convenient. But like when I first moved here, I was like, where's the toilet? I thought there might be like a public toilet somewhere. I thought that I'd been like messed over by the company. And I was like looking around, trying to find it, but then I realized you just like get this and you pull the sink away.
Oh, wow.
And that's why it's underneath.
Look at that.
It's so cool, yeah. And there's like toilet paper and everything. It's just, yeah, it's easy.
That is actually really clever design, isn't it?
Yeah, one of my favorite things. But yeah, it's a really neat little space. And there's like a little fan in here so that when, when I shower, it like, I don't need to air it out or anything. And there's like a little medicine cabinet at the top. So yeah, I think they've done great with this space.
And there's still another floor to go?
Yes, the bedroom.
Can we take a look?
Yeah, yeah. Don't know how we're all going to fit up there, but come out. Welcome.
This is super cozy.
Yeah, yeah. It's a little loft.
Yeah.
I'm happy because, well, for me anyway, there's enough like headspace. Like I can sit up and I don't, but I don't know about you.
Yeah, no, I'm totally comfortable here as well. Yeah.
Yeah, I was so happy about that because I was scared like with a loft, I'd feel like I was getting into a coffin, but...
Yeah.
But this is like super nice.
I think there's, there's something about being in a smaller space when you're sleeping that, I don't know, for me, I actually find it really comforting.
Me too. I was going to use the word comforting. Yeah, I, even like when I was a kid, I liked to have even just a mattress on each side just to give it a kind of, like a, like a smaller like feeling.
Yeah.
I don't know, like what animal sleeps out in the open? Like I feel that animals always go to like a cave or they just try to get into like a corner or something. I don't know. I think a lot of humans like to feel like they're in a tight, nice cozy space. I don't know, sometimes I'm like, oh, I love a big enough space so that I can do this or I love this or I want this extra. And I'm like, but once I have that, I'm going to want another thing and I'm going to want the next step. And I don't think I'll ever be satisfied until I'm satisfied with where I am presently, so.
What do you think the big advantage of living in a space like this is?
It keeps you, I, I still love that it keeps me creative and I love uh, living by myself. Like I know, like there are much bigger spaces that people get with like share housing things. But I love having that time to myself and having that space that is my own to like relax, unwind, and really just get into the zone of things. But yeah, I think just being able to think creatively and have all these opportunities to, to make this space my own in whatever way I can. I think that's my favorite thing about this space.
Is there anything that you actually struggle with living here?
I like to dance and it's a struggle. Cause every time I move my arms, I hit the wall. I get so sad. I'm like, I just wanna dance, but it's not that bad. Like I can still dance as long as I face the right way. And I wanna have dinner parties. I mean, I could have dinner parties, but I can't make enough food and have enough space for everyone to be sitting comfortably for a long amount of time.
Right.
Like I could have friends over for a little bit, but I would like it if I could have them over for like a day. Or like sleepovers are really challenging, cause it's like, where?
Yeah.
But mostly I'm really happy here and it's my space and it's my little house.
Tokyo is famous for being a super expensive city.
Hmm.
What's the rent here like?
Um, I pay sixty nine thousand yen, which is uh, like less than what I was paying in a rural town in Australia.
Wow.
Yeah, it's yeah, sixty nine thousand yen a month and that includes wifi, utilities. Um, I have month to month contracts, which is good with my kind of visa. And it's English friendly and it's close to a main train station. Like it, I, I personally feel that I've got a good deal. And it can be a bit expensive living in Tokyo. Uh, rent can be expensive, but you've just got to really search to find the right places and you'll find some good stuff.
Emma, this is a super cool apartment.
Yay.
I feel, I feel really honored to have been sort of brought into this cozy little nook of your world. And it's been such an adventure. Thank you so much for showing me around.
No problem.
Could you tell me uh, again, how many square feet that apartment was?
Eighty two.
Eighty two, is that what it was? It was eight square meters, eighty, eighty two square feet. Yeah.
A little claustrophobic.
But it, it costs a thousand dollars a month.
Six hundred.
Six hundred.
Was it easier?
Yeah, so that's cheap.
Okay, and then I have, I thought I had one more here. I might have to search for it here in just a second. Okay, let's see. So yeah, so two really small ones and co, oh, first I need to do U two. And then co-housing.
While, while you're pulling that up, um, Richard, can you um, define kitchen? Is it particular appliances or?
You know, our, our ordinance says cooking facilities and it doesn't say specifically what. What we've always done is, is a, a range, you know, stove, oven and uh, burners. And I believe some people have, have made a, you know, tried to get around that by, you know, a hot plate and a microwave kind of thing and uh, so it's, um, we probably need to think about that as, as Deb mentioned about.
Do you allow them to get away with it or?
Well, we don't, we don't know about it. That's the thing. I mean, we suspect things, but we don't, we don't go in and, you know, do inspections. You know, kitchen police inspections or something. This is a raid. Do you have a hot plate?
You, you're talking about the guy who builds it on his own uh, without a permit or something like that then?
Well, you know, we've had.
I was asking, I think, if, if I took plans for my new house and didn't have an oven and uh, because I only cooked on the microwave uh, for my meals, would that, would I get a permit for that?
Yeah, I don't see why you wouldn't. When it, when it comes up is if someone is building or converting some space that uh, it's too small for a duplex, but it sure looks like a duplex. And we say, you know, you can only have one set of cooking facilities. And then just what is that, you know? And we've seen situations where, actually we've said, you know, the stove's not there, but there's a two twenty outlet, you know? So obviously, you know, that two twenties gotta go. Um, and uh, people do try to get around it. And you know, if it looks on the plans like they're trying to get around it, we try to stop it. Does that answer your question kind of?
Yeah, I, I think it, it might be something we want to revisit to actually have a, a definition of what a kitchen is. I mean, there are, there are lots of countries where you walk into a kitchen and there is no oven.
Right.
You know, there's a, there's a cooktop and often a, a microwave. But an oven is uh, in some countries, just not something that you see frequently.
Where the food is prepared outside of the home.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So it might be helpful if we had it better defined.
Yeah, I think so.
So we, we have the problem of, of defining what a kitchen is. And then we, we um, define a unit based on whether it has a kitchen. And so that complicates things. And then we also um, you know, are talking to some people about uh, housing where uh, people basically would have their own private bedrooms and baths, but they would share uh, share a kitchen. And then do we consider that to be a single family house because it only has one kitchen? And so it gets, it gets complicated. And then because um, it, it's not only a density question, but it's also uh, system development charges. Um, that the city charges every new unit uh, and hotel room. Um, we charge system development charges. And um, so then the question is, are we charging for one or are we charging for multiple? So yeah.
So those, what you just said that like, it's like communal housing. All the college towns have this where they have two to four master suites. They have their own bathroom and then they share a living room, kitchen and laundry.
Right.
Um, and they rent them out individually, which is great because they're affordable for the individual and easy to not lose all of your income when a renter leaves. Um, as especially as frequently as it does in a college town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I've talked with some friends of mine about this and their big question is exactly what you're just saying there. If, I would be, as one of them said, they would be willing to build something like that around here if they could do one hookup fee for the, 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 the number of units through the front door.
Right.
And that would be, that would be enticing.
Right.
But what you're saying, there's a lot of possibly lost money in that.
There, there are some complexities for sure. And you know, another question is, so how many, if you need to have two parking spaces per dwelling unit, how many do you have for that kind of dwelling unit where you may have four individuals? Um, likely here in Lincoln City, all to have their own car. And you know, so, so we really have to take a look at this.
People did have big parking lots.
Yeah, it's, it's complicated.
Might be interesting to look to see if cities like Corvallis or Eugene have addressed this issue in their uh, ordinances. You know, how they define, you know, if they charge system development charges for a unit like that or not.
Yes.
All of those were stacked up four or five stories. So I, I mean, I'm sure you could kind of, we can't go that high here.
But could, could our fee structure be set so that if you know that the people are gonna have, share a common kitchen, uh, but there are five master bedroom suites around the common area? Couldn't you have that as a classification so that you have the adequate amount of parking, uh, et cetera?
Well, you know, we'll, we'll have to think that through. I, I, I mean, I think we, we could probably change our um, fee structures and our requirements. Um, so that we think they're appropriate, but we have to kind of anticipate this new sort of housing. One of the things of, you know, that, that I think we should keep in mind when we're looking at these kinds of housing is so, say you have four um, ma- master bedroom and, and bathroom suites, um, sharing one kitchen. So you have four people living in that dwelling unit. And it wasn't that long ago when the average number of people per household maybe was four or five or six people. You know, when people had large families. Now our average uh, household size is more like two. And so uh, in terms of having the infrastructure in the city, the plumbing and so forth, with water in the sewer to deal with that, we probably do have adequate sewer and water to allow for that kind of extra density. Because it's not really an increase over what we once had anyway. So um, I don't, yeah, I think it's a pretty interesting topic.
I think there are a lot of uh, new potential designs that could come out of the tiny home movement. For example, thinking right now where you might have on one area or an acre, several tiny homes. None with a kitchen, but with one large communal kitchen that people use.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah, so there, there, there's lots of opportunity to be created.
Isn't that a campground? Isn't that a campground?
Well, no, you'd be living permanently in your tiny home.
Sure, sure.
Da- Davis has a, a development similar to that where the, there are clusters. Um, multiple families live in the cluster and they have, they have small kitchen, well, you would think of like a little kitchenette in each of the units, but a large um, community cooking area and gathering place.
Okay, that's a good segue into my next video. And this one is co-housing communities help prevent social isolation. So not only are they providing a different way to live, but it also for people who are single or small families, uh, who would like the support of additional people in their living situation. This is, this is an answer. Possibly.
This is the regular dinner scene at Sette Dema, a co-housing community forty five minutes outside Denmark's capital of Copenhagen. Steve Brink, an architect, and his wife, an artist, and the teenage daughters they've raised here are responsible for tonight's meal. For themselves and twenty neighbors in the common house.
We eat together four times a week for those who want to participate.
What's it like cooking for twenty five people? How do you do that?
First of all, we have a kitchen that's capable for it. And so we have the tools to do it. That's very important.
Communal meals are a staple at Sette Dema, where seventy one people live in twenty eight houses, clustered around shared recreational and outdoor spaces. Walkways, gardens and parking and a common house. Residents are expected to clean shared areas and take turns tending the grounds. Everyone shares resources like laundry facilities, outdoor tools and play equipment. Small groups of families rotate leading monthly community meetings.
You live in kind of a small, small village. You know everybody around you and you share as much as possible. So you are a very close neighbor and you're kind of depending on each other. But you're not obligated to any um, strict rules.
The Sette Dema community is made up of a range of singles, couples, retirees and families with children. Every family has privacy in a home with its own bedrooms, baths and kitchen. The land is cooperatively owned, but residents own their homes. A structure similar to a condominium association in the US. The cost of homes here is comparable to other homes in the area. But an average sized household pays about thirty five hundred dollars a year for communal resources. Sette Dema started forty six years ago and is recognized as the first co-housing community in the world. Britta Bira and her husband Arna were among the first families to move in.
We didn't want our family to spend our lives in an insular way, in a house on a suburban street somewhere. And one day we saw a newspaper ad saying that some people had their eyes on a plot of land and they were looking for twenty five to thirty families to buy it and build houses as well as a communal house.
You share and there's a lot more efficiency.
Lisa Berkman, a professor of public policy and epidemiology at Harvard University, says that co-housing harkens back to the kinds of communities that used to naturally dominate our societies.
You know, when you think about the apartment buildings that were designed at the turn of the century, they were designed as two family houses, um, or three family houses, you know, each on a floor. And those enabled um, multi-generation households to live together and still have their own housing.
Berkman says that co-housing can reduce social isolation and the detrimental health effects associated with it.
Social isolation relates to the number of ties and the quality of relationships that you have. Religious ties, community ties, work ties. People who are very isolated, who are disconnected, have a mortality rate that's about three times as high. That is, they're about three times as likely to die over maybe a decade as people who have many, many more um, ties.
Seventy year old Yudahella has lived in Sette Dema for thirty years.
It's important to me to be with a mixed group, not just with other older people. Because then we would just talk about our diseases and aches and pains. Older people can't give the same energy as younger people can.
So having um, neighbors and knowing their kids, I think that's just like it's a benefit of having a big family.
Is this replacing the idea of the extended family?
Indeed it is. So, so I see it very much as the extended family.
It's like nice to have a friend nearby always, that you can talk to.
Fourteen year old Ella Poulsen has lived in Sette Dema her whole life.
It's kind of like everyone's a parent and everybody will uh, take care of the kid if there's something wrong. And uh, if the parents aren't there. And uh, I think it's just very safe.
It's estimated that at least one percent of the Danish population lives in co-housing arrangements. In the United States, the Co-Housing Association of America estimates there are about one hundred and fifty communities. Rocky Hill Co-Housing in Northampton, Massachusetts was established twelve years ago. It has twenty eight households with residents ranging from age two to eighty. With a similar financial model to Sette Dema, Rocky Hill has a variety of common spaces, resources, activities and shared chores.
I love knowing that uh, somebody's out there plowing the path, you know, on a snowy morning. That's lovely. Uh, knowing that there are mixed ages of people who can help with keeping the place up and we have our jobs divided.
Carol Reinhardt is seventy two years old and just retired from her job as a hospice coordinator. She's lived at Rocky Hill since its formation.
You don't get up someday in the morning and say, you know, I think this is the day I'm gonna have a community. You know, you build a community.
The number of Americans sixty five and older is expected to nearly double by twenty fifty. According to the Pew Research Center, sixty one percent say they would prefer to stay in their homes, even when they can no longer take care of themselves. That's compared to seventeen percent who would opt for an assisted living facility. Just eight percent would prefer to move in with a family member.
So this is kind of interesting.
Harvard professor Lisa Berkman says co-housing allows people to age in their homes.
With the aging of the population, um, and the increasing frailty that people will experience as they age, at some point, everybody needs a little help. Americans are particularly vulnerable to social isolation, in part because we value independence um, so much. And because we're so um, mobile and we live in a very, very big country.
Berkman says that while older Americans are especially vulnerable to social isolation, young families often struggle to maintain social networks as they juggle work and family. College professor Gary Felder lives at the Rocky Hill Co-Housing Community with his wife and their two young children. He says their social life is built in, unlike other families who don't live in a co-housing arrangement.
You gotta arrange babysitting and you gotta figure out the timing and then you gotta rush back and so on. And that was just never a big deal for us. We would put our kids down, we would throw in a baby monitor and we would go spend an evening with our friends.
Cause we're right next door to the common house.
Absolutely. And if one of our kids woke up, two minutes later, we were in the bedroom.
Felder admits that this lifestyle isn't for everyone and about one family a year decides to leave.
The biggest challenge is that you're making decisions with um, twenty seven other households. That is the definition of hell for some people.
But Felder says that for his family, the benefits they get from an intergenerational community outweigh the difficulties.
The other thing which our kids get, which is even more rare in this society, is they have regular interactions with elders, with seniors. They're very aware of the whole process of people getting older and retiring and having physical problems and dying.
Rocky Hill residents are coming up with new guidelines to help aging community members, including ride sharing and connecting residents with financial and medical services.
Could we even uh, make a space here in the common house for somebody who lives and is a licensed practical nurse? And taking care of several different families who may be in that area of need.
At the Sette Dema community in Denmark, maintaining an intergenerational community is getting harder. More than half of the residents are now over sixty five. The community is encouraging younger families to move in when homes become available. Many longtime residents like Yudahella don't want to leave their social support network.
We've been a part of creating this and want to feel the benefits that come with getting old in a co-housing community like this.
Do you think that there's something about this community? Does it keep you younger?
Yeah. Yes, definitely. I'm convinced that if I lived with elderly people exclusively, I would degenerate. So the fact that I'm living with younger people is a gift on a daily basis.
Most people, when they hear the word commune.
I found that very appealing, sort of the extended family we created, you know, intergenerational, sharing resources and helping each other in different ways. I think there's a lot of potential for that model, yeah.
They just built one in North Carolina, but it's like a, like a high-rise condo thing.
Oh, really?
And so everybody's got their own apartment, and they're like the communal living, but they're all attached to this one building. They have a big community kitchen for everybody in the building. They do exactly like that. Everybody's got some chores that they participate in and they help maintain the grounds. But it's like four thousand dollars a month to rent a place there.
Well, it's not, yeah, not just for poor people.
It's meant for lawyers and the young lawyers and whatnot downtown, but it's that same idea. It looks wonderful.
Yeah.
But who, my wife asks, who, who would, like, so, so you got three people who just said, I'm not, I don't do physical labor, go, get out of here. Who kicks that person out, or who, I mean, who would do that?
You know, I bet each one's probably individual in terms of their rules and their, the structure, and, and the cost, and probably the amount of involvement, you know, because some of the, I know, you know, we've had suggestions of housing situations where, as I said, you know, everybody has their own master bedroom and bath, a joint kitchen, maybe a joint, including a living area. I've seen other ones in, like, retirement communities where they might have guest rooms that everybody can use, you know, for their guests when they have company. And, and just, you know, depends on how involved you want to be with your neighbors, how much you share, I think. Yeah.
I had a friend who lived in a co-op in Berkeley, California, that was based on that pattern, and everybody had their own condominium and their own kitchen, but there was also a communal kitchen where they shared in meals once or twice a week.
Mm-hmm.
But it was intergenerational, and families, single people, quite diverse, yeah. But it seemed to be effective. They were getting along, yeah.
So we've done a lot already to try to increase our housing options here in town with the cottage clusters and with the accessory dwelling units, and so, you know, we may just have to keep, keep trying to stay one step ahead of, of options.
I've got a question on the building report. Are the numbers better this year for housing than they've been in the past, or, I tried to count the number that came across, and I thought it looked like forty, building permits were issued this month.
Richard will tell us about that.
Or, houses last year, was it eighty-four, something like that? I think we did eighty-four new houses last year. I think we're at, we've taken in twenty-four applications so far this year. Normal before the boom was forty to sixty. As I said, it got up over a hundred and forty during the boom per year, and then when the, when the recession hit, we were down below twenty a year. The last two years have been much, been even above what I would consider the original normal, and this year seems to be continuing that trend.
Are we seeing any differences in the design of the homes? Is there a trend towards smaller homes or larger homes?
No, I was just looking at the, at the figures for the ones that we got in this month, and they're all, they aren't, they aren't smaller. The builders seem to be still providing, you know, the, your three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath type houses.
Are they all single family?
Are they considered then not popularly priced or working, workforce housing?
The, the issue with workforce housing is, well, like the houses that I was just talking about, I would not consider workforce housing. There, I mean, they, they cost two-hundred-thousand dollars to build the house. It doesn't include the land and any profit for the builder and that kind of thing. So, problem with workforce housing is, is getting builders interested in building it, because they don't make as much money on, on workforce housing as they do on, on just, you know, standard market-rate housing. And, you know, we're looking at any number of incentives or removing disincentives, ways to make these things happen. And to some extent, it's starting to happen. You know, the city has eight properties that we're marketing, and we've had a number of, of expressions of interest, in particular in the ones where we're, where we're requiring workforce housing to at least be included, if not be the whole thing. So there are, there are things happening. It's a slow process, but we're getting there. Then we're looking at things like redoing the SDCs, looking at parking requirements. I was just looking at a, at an ordinance from a town in Florida where they're having, they've just authorized something they call older adult living facilities, which is similar to what we were, what we're just seeing here about the co-housing, but they require one parking space for every two units. Things like that, where you get to reduce the, the associated cost can be, can make a huge difference in the cost and can actually perhaps make them more attractive to developers.
Patty, do you have a...
Yeah, are all of the applications we've seen this year for single-family homes?
Yes. There are some apartments in the works. We'll just have to see how that comes along. We've had some pre-application meetings on two or three different apartment developments, and whether they go forward or not remains to be seen, but there, there is interest in them.
We also have the thirty-unit complex just behind the dental office.
Right.
That has not, I don't think they've gotten a permit yet, or they have, they have received their permit, so they're ready to go as soon as the developer's ready.
Yeah, and that was issued last year, that's why I'm saying we've only had single family.
Do we have expect... Excuse me. One idea that came out in the focus group that I, I and Vicky Manessis conducted for Imagine Lincoln City was the need for much more public transportation, both up and down the coast, within the city, and between here and the valley. And I would think, you know, as, you know, if we move in that direction, there'll be less of a need to provide parking spots for apartment buildings or homes, and you can reduce that impact on the environment as well. Yeah. Excuse me, Gary.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we have anything on the apartment building that they're putting in by the dental office, what expectation there is on how, on the rental pricing points.
I think Nathan Naught, the developer, told us what he was expecting to charge, and I can't remember well enough to want to say.
I think for a one-bedroom, it was below a thousand.
Yeah.
I don't know if you had one, or at least two-bedroom, might have been.
Two bedrooms and three bedrooms.
Yeah, two bedrooms and three bedrooms, but I think that his lowest rate was, was somewhere like just under a thousand, as I recall.
I, I'm wondering, because I am really in favor of the Nelskot Gap Plan with the addition of Foothill Boulevard, and I'm wondering if there's any rustic area up at the top where a community like the one that I sent you, and I can't remember the name, but I sent it to you, and it had modular homes, but they were neat-looking and slick and had a lot of, they could be a vacation home or a full-time home. I could live in some of them that I've, that I looked at in Palm Springs this year, and it'd be like having a one-bedroom apartment.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm curious as how we can start that going, should I work through the, the fellow who's working with Mrs. Robertson, or how can we get involved so that we can push for some affordable housing here sooner rather than later?
Well, good question. I mean, one thing you can do here with this group is, is, push to provide things, to amend our ordinances, to do things that, like I say, either incentivize or remove disincentives for affordable housing. There's a whole lot of innovative things out there right now. We're ahead of a lot of communities and behind others. And it's, in some ways, it's hard to keep up. There's all kinds of things coming out. You know, I've toyed with the idea of allowing something vague like innovative housing and subject to approval by the planning commission or something like that, where we say, you know, come up with ideas and let us talk about it. But as, as far as like direct involvement, certainly it couldn't hurt to talk to Urban Renewal. You're talking about Alison Robertson.
Yeah.
Our economic development, Urban Renewal Director.
I could, I could see that being the first step in getting some affordable housing here that, that workers can get, get if we could acquire land or have a local developer develop the same kind of thing. And those, those homes, whether it's single-wide or double-wide, basically, are cute as can be, and they can have twelve hundred feet. There's, some of them are three-bedroom.
There was a very, there was a very good example at the tiny home symposium that Richard and I attended with a couple of the city councilors, and there was a woman there who spoke, who was an activist from Florida, and she was a professional woman. She had a job, and she had a large home, and she was tired of spending her spare time cleaning her house. So she checked to see whether she could develop a tiny house and work for the city to get ordinances passed that would allow her to do that. And it was a win-win situation all, all around, because they ended up using a part of the city that was sort of, mm, kind of run down, and they cleared it out, and they put in a cluster of tiny homes there. And she is living in that home and loving it. There's a community of people who live in those tiny homes. So it's an opportunity to, you know, promote affordable housing. At the same time, you're, you're enhancing areas of the city that have not, you know, that have been kind of downgraded, yeah. So it's refurbishing the, the urban environment and providing affordable housing.
And making the city bigger so that it can have a higher...
Microphone.
Microphones.
Our, our cost of living is the same as Oregon, but the, the fact of the matter is we have the lowest per capita income in the state, and that is not something I'm particularly proud of.
Yeah, and, and here in Lincoln City, finding those, finding some areas that need to be redeveloped are, you know, I mean, not, not as easy perhaps as in some, some other communities. For the Nelskot Gap area, we do have some areas that can get sewer and water now, and now that we have a plan, I think the owners can see how, even if they are not the next one to develop, they can see a pathway to how, where they could develop. And, but in doing that and getting that plan to proceed, I think we need to do some implementation. Of course, if, even in the areas that are within the city, maybe we need to start a local improvement district or something like that, so that there's a mechanism for those property owners to share in the development of Foothills Boulevard, for example, because it's not just going to serve the adjacent property, but it's also going to serve the, the larger neighborhood as well. So we have, we have quite a bit of work to do on getting that going, and I'm glad that you're enthusiastic about it, and I think the, one of the most important things is just keeping it in the forefront in the future.
I can also want to mention again and reemphasize that a part of these eight properties that we're, the city is offering, three of them, including one at the villages at Cascade Head, one over by the Episcopal Church, and one by the skate park, we are pushing for, including workforce housing, and a couple of them may end up being exclusively workforce housing. And we're getting, rather than going out and saying, this is, someone, someone build this, we're saying, we have these properties, someone tell us what you want to do about it. And we're getting some very enthusiastic and innovative responses from people who are in the business of providing that kind of housing.
Patty, do you have a question?
You know, rather than doing those sorts of conversations one-on-one, have you considered having some sort of work session or workshop where the developers can come in and we can all chat about the, maybe the constraints to developing these sort of innovative ideas, or what they would need, what we would need?
That is something that we've talked about a little bit, and related to that, we've also talked about the fact that a lot of people don't know, a lot of the developers don't know about the opportunities that we have in the community to allow affordable housing, cottage clusters, accessory dwelling units, and that kind of thing. And that we need to do a lot more outreach with local developers on that. But it'd be a good idea to get feedback from them and, and information. I mean, we do hear a lot, I mean, it's always about system development charges, but we need to see what else there might be, too.
Yeah, yeah.
At the same conference that we attended, there was a presenter from, I forget the name of it, a group, oh, Square One Village in Eugene, where tiny homes really, there's a variety of tiny homes. Some of them were just a bedroom and nothing more. Others are sort of a studio apartment, have been used to help solve their homeless problem or address their homeless problem, and also used as transitional housing and permanent housing. So that presenter, I think his name is Andrew Hebbin, you know, was very effective in showing how this nonprofit group worked with the city to provide these housing opportunities for the homeless and for people who wanted to acquire permanent housing. And it might be a worthwhile idea to have him, invite him to make a presentation to the city council or to the planning commission, for people like him, yeah.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea. We can look into that. You mentioned the Square One Housing. Among other things, they have, their, their plans, their building plans are available online. For five hundred dollars, you can buy a set of the plans for any of, any of several different models of affordable hous, or of tiny houses. And they're, the plans are intended to be in total compliance with our residential specialty building code. And so five hundred bucks, you got a plan, and it's, it really streamlines things, so. Yeah, and that Square One Village is, is one of several things that they're doing in, in Eugene with tiny housing, both as permanent housing and as, as housing for, for the homeless. So it's really interesting.
Maybe having some sort of a housing, affordable housing summit or forum, inviting speakers, having, inviting developers to come and, and have a conversation could be very interesting.
Yeah, at that workshop, there was a model of a tiny home there, and it was fun to walk through it, and it'd be, maybe perhaps we could invite one of the manufacturers to bring a tiny home here to Lincoln City and set it up at some location for the summer, so people could walk through and see what it's like, yeah.
Love all the furniture in those places. Love Murphy Beds and...
That's clever.
Just push it all, hide it all, and then...
Very clever.
All right. Any more training for tonight?
That's it.
Reports and comments, Richard?
Well, one of the main things, we want to talk a little bit about the tiny house conference that we went to, and we've covered a lot of it already. I meant, should mention that the way they were defining tiny houses, there's under four hundred square feet, and it was anywhere from seventy to four hundred square feet is what they mentioned. By the way, that one in Tokyo that we saw, eight square meters, that's eighty-six square feet. So it can be pretty small. But a lot of these that are, that are just under four hundred square feet, you know, they're, they're, they're square rather than long and skinny, so you can stretch your arms out, so.
The one I saw in Palm Springs was about seven hundred square feet, but it was set a tiny home subdivision. It was on leased land in a modular home or trailer subdivision in Palm Springs, and it... And it had a beautiful kitchen, nice bathroom, stall shower, and a big enough bedroom that you could put in a queen size bed and have a living room and bookshelves there. It was an impressive house.
Yeah, yeah, they can, they can be quite interesting. There's the, the developer or the builder that Steve Griffiths mentioned is actually based in Albany. And I've been through the facility there and it's really quite wonderful. And some of the houses are, are just incredible. One of the problems we're having in Oregon is our state building codes division has done things that basically make what's called a tiny house on wheels illegal in Oregon. And that's kind of been a big step backwards. Tiny house on a foundation is no problem. Tiny house on wheels is, is at least now illegal. So they can't make any new ones. You can, you can have them, but, but, you know, you have to get a special, instead of being able just to hook up your tra, hook it up to your truck and go, now you have to get a special permit from Department of Transportation to be able to move it on the highway. There's, there's a lot of issues with what they've done to it to...
Isn't it just a fifth wheel, pretty much?
No, it's, they're, they're essentially a flatbed trailer, you know, usually with, with four wheels and a standard trailer hitch. You know, in, in Lincoln City, unlike a lot of places, we don't have, except for manufactured homes, we don't have a minimum house size. So already you can build a tiny house anywhere in the city if it's stick-built. And a tiny house technically is something that's just built on a, on a trailer, but it's built the way a standard house is built. In other words, it's stick-built. It's not, it's not a manufactured home, what you think of them. One of the problems that the state building codes division has with tiny houses is their use of sweeping, sleeping lofts. And because of having egress, like the, the one we saw in Tokyo, you're up in that, that loft, there's only one way out and it's down that ladder. There's a fire down there, you're stuck. The, with a lofty, you, you, egress, you want to have a window that you can get out and, you know, not, not fall 600 feet, you know, from a high rise or something, but... So that, that's one of the big issues and...
Have they addressed that? I know we heard from two state representatives who had worked on that issue in Salem. And I think, did it pass?
They did, they did not address that in the, in the, in this short session that they just had. Probably next year it will come up. Whether it gets addressed in a, in a good way or not remains to be seen. Right now, the building codes division is continuing to do things that sort of get in the way of, of tiny houses. They're, they're really against tiny houses.
Richard, I got a couple of questions. Because it seems like when I'm seeing tiny houses, I'm seeing these houses that are $150,000 or more, and that's not going to answer our problem for workforce housing at all. I mean, making smaller doesn't save you if the price is so high. But what you were talking about is the manufactured houses, they can be built considerably cheaper. My understanding they can be, but we have restrictions against them. Is that where we're at right now?
We don't allow single wides and we don't allow less than 1,000 square feet for manufactured homes.
So we're basically shutting that door?
To some extent. In an RV park, you're allowed to basically live full-time in an RV or in what's called a park model, which is a 400 square foot RV, essentially. But yeah, in, in one sense, yes, we have shut the door. And that's an outcome from, in the past, a lot, there was a lot of pushback against manufactured homes because of their appearance. And the builders have made them much nicer now. They're certainly not, not the way they were before. And it's certainly something we need to take a closer look at.
Yeah, I guess when, you know, when I'm seeing tiny houses and I watch a lot of stuff on them and then they, they give you the price tag at the end. And, and it's 150, 175. And it's like, why small? Why call it small if you're going to charge a high price for it?
You know, one of the things with, with houses, once you have the, the bathroom and the kitchen, that's where, it's a huge amount per square foot for those facilities. Then another bedroom, another, you know, 400 square feet, that's going to add some, but, you know, it's...
As much as a bathroom with high-end appliances.
Yeah. So, yeah, so it's, size alone is not, is not an absolute indicator of cost. Land cost is, is something that we need to address. That's why we, like cottage clusters, we allow it double the density with size limitations on, on the, on the houses themselves. You know, RV parks, it's one space per 1,200 square feet. Unlike our, our most dense single family residential is, is one house for 5,000 square feet, which actually with an ADU would be half of that, but our accessory dwelling unit. But whether we want to do something like have tiny house village basically on the same basis that we allow for RVs where it's, you know, maybe one unit for 1,200 square feet. And with, you know, a maximum, that works out to a density, I want to say, of about 28 or 29 units per acre, which is pretty dense. But it's the same, it's basically the same density as we allow for apartments now.
Except for the, the cost of that, buildings themselves is so high, it pretty much shuts down the idea of it's affordable.
To some extent.
It is relative though. I mean, compared to our average home price, it's probably still affordable for a great many more people, but not obviously for everyone.
Yeah, 150 is better than 250.
Exactly.
Which I think is our average for, for here.
Don't know that, but that sounds about right.
Sounds about right, yeah.
Certainly for new housing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it isn't any less than that.
Three-bedroom houses, the average, I think, for Lincoln City is 250.
Can you speak up a little bit? It's hard to hear.
I'm sorry. I think the average for Lincoln City is 250 for a three-bedroom house. That's a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah. But there were some interesting things that came up at the, at the tiny house conference we went to. As I said, we've mentioned a lot of them. As I said, Eugene is doing a lot of things, but they're really pointing their tiny house things at dealing with the homelessness issue. There are other things that, you know, like tiny house villages that can be really, really pretty neat things, similar to cottage clusters. You know, it's just a, a different model where we can maybe allow them on wheels as opposed to just on foundations or something. And of course, one of the things I found most fascinating from the conference was in addition to tiny houses, they had a, they briefly showed us a tiny tavern, which was a...
I missed that.
Oh, it was a, a six-stool bar that, on wheels.
That's great.
Food trucks and six-stool bars.
Yes, yeah, yeah. You know, one of the things that, that we've, that we got, we're getting from the visioning process is one of the things people want is food carts. I mean, that was a really high response thing. And we don't allow them now. And that's something we've got to be thinking about, what the, what the people want. You know, it's, I mean, there's, there's pros and cons. And we've got to be willing to address, you know, essentially market issues and what's happening.
Just to clarify, we allow the food cart, that's the push cart. That's a maximum of four feet by eight feet. But we don't allow the food trucks.
Right.
They specifically were talking about food trucks in the visioning process. Yeah.
I meant trucks, food trucks.
What do you classify the Vivian's barbecue trailer that she's, we've got, it parked in front of their restaurant next to the lake?
Haven't seen it.
It's a smoker.
You just, you just...
You just outed Vivian's, I think. It, it's cooker only, isn't it? Or do they serve out of it? Because if they served out of it, then we would probably have to go talk to them about that, so.
If they use it, they use it to cater it. I'm sorry.
They cook out of it, but they cater...
That's different, though.
That's different, yeah. I think maybe, I had another example with Eugene where they're not only using it for housing the homeless, but they're also, I think they have a village called Emerald Village, where they're using city land to build tiny homes to provide permanent affordable housing for those in low-income folks, yeah, yeah.
Also, one thing that came up was that, I haven't looked at it in detail yet, but the, the legislature passed a statute, I think, not this year, but I think maybe the year before, allowing churches to have, is it two?
I think as many as four.
Okay, as many as four tiny houses for, for the homeless, essentially. And they're also talking about something called a conestoga house, which was, it's an arched thing. It looks, looks like one of those old... Covered wagon things, but it's, as, as emergency housing for... It was, it was, it was pretty interesting. There's, there's things happening, the opportunities out there. I'm not sure that many of the churches know that they can have these facilities on their property.
I think that's the, what, the issue that I got out of attending this meeting workshop is that they are these opportunities there and new directions to take with tiny homes. But I think our challenge here in Lincoln City anyway is to let people know about the accessory dwelling unit option and to inform them, you know, give them more opportunities to learn more about tiny home at the same time.
Yeah.
Because I know we've had some tiny homes built in Lincoln City recently, but there's not a huge, big trend in that direction, yeah. Anything else, Richard?
Well, I just, one of the things I also wanted to mention related to tiny homes or affordable housing in general is that we're looking at code simplification and, like I said, mentioning removing the, any disincentives as appropriate and incorporating incentives if we can.
One more. On that line, how are we standing right now as a city on, on our capacity for sewers and water? Are we built out or are we under, underutilized?
Well, I wouldn't say we're underutilized. We're not built out, you know. The city just spent a few years ago a million dollars on upgrading the sewer pump station over on West Dobbs Lake Road so that the property where the DMV is into the north, the village's property, as well as Lincoln Palisades area, can continue to build. Because that was, that was maxed out, the capacity there. So like I said, they spent a million dollars on upgrading that pump station so that we could continue to build.
I guess what I'm asking is, because we were talking about SB, you know, sys, system development charges, you know, if we had leeway, we, we could consider reducing those or something like that on a, on a, you know, benefit.
Remember this, a system development charge is, is to build capacity. And, you know, we don't have a lot of excess capacity, but like when we, if we go into the, the Nell Scott Gap area, just putting in the sewer lines there, not, not capacity for the station, but just putting in the lines, you know, and it can cost a lot of money. Most of that will be borne by developers directly because they put in the streets and water and sewer system. But some of it may end up, may end up being a city burden as well. And we will reach a point where we are maxed out.
Anything else?
Do, do you and Patty have more to tell us about the Visioning Committee and your focus groups that you held?
Patty, would you like to talk about your focus groups?
I realize it was a while ago.
Yeah, let me think.
Yes.
Actually, the, the focus group that, that I participated in that was probably the most interesting was the one with the kids at the high school. We had a, a group of 16 of the leadership class. So it, it actually spread across the various grade levels in the high school. And they were, they were great. They, they really had some interesting ideas about what they would like to see in the town. And of course, from their perspective, it focused primarily on things for them to do that aren't here. Places to go out that, that don't close at a certain time period and then turn to 21 and over for, for drinking and such. Their desire to have a location where they can hold dances, things like that. And then they focused, pretty much the second half of the discussion was on the school itself and expanding the opportunities within the school. They're, they're quite savvy. They were, were very candid in their perspective that the school district has a difficult time keeping teachers, that teachers come in and they're there for a year or two and then they leave. So there isn't a tremendous amount of buy-in from the kids' perspective. They also, you know, bemoan what I think is probably, probably happening across the country as public schools lose funding programs. There are no, they don't, they don't have an orchestra. They don't have any string instrument instruction at all. Pretty much everything is done as an after-school activity. The things that I think when most of us were kids in high school, they were classes within the, the school program, the daily school program. They're not in this high school. So, you know, and, and some of these kids have come here from other areas and so they know what's missing. And so they were quite candid in that information. I, if, if my laptop hadn't disappeared, I would have been able to call it up and, and give you some more of the detail on it. But I think that's pretty much what they, what they had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vicki Manessas, who's a member of the Imagine Lincoln City Committee, and I conducted two focus groups in March. And I compared the results of both of them and found a few common themes. And one was the desire to maintain the small-town feel of Lincoln City and to protect Lincoln City's natural environment. Both groups are concerned about the impact that major population growth in the Willamette Valley is going to have on the Oregon coast's natural resources. And someone mentioned it's expected to grow by 500,000 in the next 20 years or so. And which, folks, group members, folks, well, how are we going to deal with that? Because, and how are we going to maintain the small-town feel if, you know, huge, more numbers of people are coming to town? And one solution was much more heavy investment in public transportation, both up and down the coast, so people, and from here to the valley, as I mentioned before. And also to encourage people to take public transportation and work by having, you know, our bus runs run more frequently. Because one of the participants mentioned that they can take a bus to work, but they can't take a bus home, so they have to drive, you know. So, because this bus doesn't operate as frequently as they think it should. And there was a desire to really get a lot of the traffic that's on one-on-one somewhere else. So part of one-on-one, especially in the heart of the different pearls, could be used for pedestrian traffic. And so I think they recognize the challenges. They think, another theme that came out was that tourism, of course, is going to grow, but perhaps it should grow in a new direction, towards more outdoor activities, recreational activities, ecotourism-type activities, to emphasize what is of value in our natural environment and also to focus on our Native American cultural history in Lincoln County, that that's not something that anybody looks at now very much. And we should do more of that and make people more aware of... And we should do more of that and make people more aware of our heritage here on the coast. The other idea was to look, grow the economy by promoting small manufacturing and rely less on tourism, more full-time jobs with the paid salaries that are more than just the minimum wage. And some examples were, why are kayaks being produced in Los Angeles? They should be produced right here in Lincoln City where they can be used, you know, and, you know, where they can be a part of our emphasis on the natural environment and outdoor recreation. Others would like to see Lincoln City become a center for the arts, for writing, and develop a reputation, much as Ashland has developed a reputation with the Shakespeare Festival. This is a city where people can come to not only recreate, but to be creative artistically or by writing or by performing. But they all view, you know, view Lincoln City as their home and they say, we should take pride in Lincoln City. And if we take pride in Lincoln City, we'll communicate that to our many guests who come here as tourists. And, but, yeah, so I think major concern about the impact of population growth in the valley, on the coast, and how we're going to deal with that. And a major support for much more public transportation and getting people out of their cars and into public transportation, not only local residents, but people who come, tourists who come here from the valley. Could take maybe a rail line that's built on 18 over to the coast.
That would be so fun, wouldn't it?
Oh, God.
You know, that, that's something that the kids brought up too, is the idea of walking plazas as opposed to, to vehicle transportation for every place. If you had, you know, we, we talked about the great, you know, some of the great cities in the world and what do they have in common? And most of them have in common a central plaza that's walking only, that doesn't include cars. And so, they would like to see that type of thing incorporated here as well.
I think Taft is ripe for that. It is already so close to being a walking only area down there. I don't, something I dream about sometimes is just putting up some pillars and knocking all the cars out of there.
What area did you say?
Taft, just on 51st, just block 51st and-
It's wide.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were, earlier today, we were looking at various videos for training and one of the ones we looked at briefly, one of the, the highlight points that we saw was if you design and build for automobiles, you get automobiles. If you design and build for people, then you get a community, so.
One nice thing I think about Lincoln City is that it's a combination of seven cities, from Culver City to Wacoma. And those differences can be augmented with various different activities and different personalities of them. And that can be a, a nice thing for creating the communities that, that somewhere it can be a little different than another, another community.
All right, anything else? I have one- Comments from commissioners? I have one concern I want to bring up. Our last, our planning commission meeting was canceled for lack of a quorum and we still are one member short. And my concern is that issues that may be coming up on our agenda, that we have a quorum here to make, so people who come to us for requesting whatever can, you know, we can do the work that we need to do to meet their needs. And I really hope, for example, I'm not sure, what's on the agenda for our next meeting, April 17?
Nothing.
We have a conditional use permit.
That's right, yeah.
Request for St. James Santiago School.
We will need to have-
A quorum?
A quorum here, so please be at that meeting.
I'll be here.
Yeah. Any news on, of the appointment of a new commissioner or any development there?
I don't have anything on that.
Sorry, can't share that.
They've been focusing on the budget committee.
And then in May, I know that we'll have some absences, so the rest of us will need to be here. I have one question. If, for example, on April 17th, if there are only, we only have four commissioners here, and if one of us has to recuse himself or herself, will we still have a quorum with the three remaining?
I believe so. We have to have a quorum to meet. And then I think the rules are that to pass something, it's going to be a majority of the people voting.
All right. So, that would be fine, then, that would work, okay. Anything else, commissioners? All right, thank you. Meeting is dismissed.